Good morning and welcome to this public meeting of the Standing Committee on Social Development. My name is Jane Wayalan Armstrong and I am the MLA for Mofe Kletchel Region and Chair of the Standing Committee on Social Development. Today, we are joined by Superintendent Dyson Smith, RCMP G Division, to hear from him in regards to Bill Two Missing Persons Act. Bill Two Missing Persons Act received second reading in the House on February 26, 2024. This committee has been tasked with reviewing the bill to see if it needs any changes, if it has any issues we can solve, and if it is ready to continue on its path to becoming a law. Committee will hear from the RCMP today to get their perspective on this legislation that closely relates to their operations. Please note, this meeting is being livestreamed to the Assembly's social media channel. I will now ask members to introduce themselves for the record. We'll start here with the people who are present, starting to my left.
Good day. My name is Kira Testard. I'm the MLA for Range Lake. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Shawna Morgan, MLA for Yellowknife North.
And we have two that are joining us virtual, so we'll start. Okay, we'll move to, we'll get two members that are joining us by Zoom and introduce themselves. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Cheryl Yakalaya. I'm the MLA for Detcho. Thank you.
Good morning, and my name is Danny McNeely, representing MLA there for the Satu region. Thank you.
Thank you, members. Okay, I will now pass it over to Mr. Smith. Please proceed with your presentation.
Good morning, everyone. Madam Chairperson, committee members, thank you for inviting me to speak to you today. In relation to such an important topic, Chief Superintendent Lucky sends his regards and his regrets that he's unable to attend himself, but he's out of the territory at this time. By way of introduction, I am the Criminal Operations Officer for G Division RCMP, so the Northwest Territories. Currently, I'm the Acting Commanding Officer while he's away. In my capacity as Criminal Operations Officer, I had the opportunity to consult with the original draft on this legislation back in the summer of 2023. And I'd like to take the opportunity to thank the Minister of Justice and his team for putting together such a comprehensive package for review. It's a very important piece of legislation. I did present with the committee some speaking points that I intend to address. And if permitted, I'd like to start by discussing the RCMP's obligations when it comes to missing persons complaints, if that's all right. Okay, so the RCMP has a legal obligation to conduct fulsome investigations as members must adhere to. And when I refer to members, I mean the police officers. We refer to them as members. We adhere to policies relating to these investigations and, in particular, national policy, which has evolved over many years. So, missing persons means the individuals reported to or by police as someone whose whereabouts are unknown. Whatever the circumstances of their disappearance, so it doesn't matter what the rationale is or what the reason is, they are deemed to be missing. They are also considered to be missing until located, so we actually have files that must remain open for 100 years if we cannot locate them. We just can't conclude it and hope for the best. We have to keep these files as open and active. Locating the missing persons is the primary investigational objective in these types of complaints, and a person is deemed to be missing until the police force of jurisdiction receives credible information confirming the person's identity, safety, and well-being, which often includes us having to see them face-to-face. We can't just rely on a phone call or a letter saying that they're okay. We have to see them and ascertain their well-being. It's important to note that investigators have no discretion when it comes to a missing person's complaint. They cannot take it for granted that the person might not want to be found. Failure of members to adhere to these policies would be viewed as neglect of duty under our Code of Conduct for the RCMP. Now, I did include a number of statistics for the past five years. If you would like, I can go over these, or I can wait, and if people have questions, keep going. So, as you see, we've compiled the missing person reports for the last five years, beginning 2019. Keeping in mind that, again, policies and procedures evolve over the years, so that can account for the variance in numbers as well as the types of reporting that have been made. So, in 2019, we had 39 missing persons reports. I included a bunch of, a number of percentages, because I want to highlight that here in the Northwest Territories, we actually have a very high success rate of concluding these investigations, which is much higher than you will see in other jurisdictions. And that's due to the great work that our members are doing. Like, they work a long time on these investigations, and they employ a varying degree of methods to try to ascertain somebody's well-being. So, in 2019, we had an 82% solve rate. But, we know what happened to 100% of them, because that's the year where we had the fishermen that went down outside of Hay River. So, we know what happened, but we can't physically retrieve them. So, we can't conclude it, but we know what happened. In 2020, of course, right in the middle of COVID, that had a big impact because nobody was really moving around very much. We only had about nine missing persons files, again, 100% solve rate. In 2021, 22, and 23, we had big jumps in these numbers. And again, with the exception of 2023, 100% solve rate. Keep in mind, again, there are varying reasons for the big jump in numbers. Some of them are repeat calls for service on the same individuals. Some are multiple instances where we would have, say, habitual runaways, where, again, we can't take it for granted that they're just skipping curfews. We have to treat them as missing persons and find them, so they become missing persons files until located. And it should be noted as well that a large majority of our missing persons files here in the Territory, while they do meet the threshold of missing persons under the policies, quite often, there are people who just are late coming back. So, late coming back from hunting, or went out with friends for the weekend, didn't come home when they were supposed to, and they're located within a day or two. So, that accounts for that large number. The numbers look staggering, but the reality is we have a smaller amount, a much smaller amount, of true missing persons files where we can't find them for a period of time. I'm certainly open to any questions anyone may have about those statistics. If not, I can continue. Okay? I also highlighted some current processes that we undertake when it comes to missing persons files. These are various mechanisms that we utilize. Not every missing persons file will utilize all the same methods, because every case could be different. So, it starts with gathering all the information, completing missing persons report. We have a national database called CPIC where we enter information. So, if somebody is, say, missing from the Northwest Territories, and they may get stopped at a vehicle stop in Edmonton, when their name is entered, that system will be flagged, and it'll say that this person is missing from Northwest Territories. Please contact, say, the Yellowknife RCMP, and they will let us know that this person has been found alive and well. Up here, we utilize a lot of media releases, social media as well. We obtain photos, put out. That has quite a success rate for us up here, because friends and families will contact us usually within hours that this person is at somebody's house or wherever, and we can conclude the file. Physical checks of locations, tracking of cell phones in certain circumstances. So, if we feel that there's an imminent risk to somebody's safety or well-being, we can request that the telecommunications companies, what we refer to as ping a cellphone. It'll give us the GPS location of where their cellphone is or last was, and it gives us a starting point to look. Monitoring social media for activity, financial accounts to see if there's any banking activity. Again, so if somebody was missing from Yellowknife, and all of a sudden they're taking out money at a bank machine in Edmonton, then we know that we need to be looking down there, or engage the Edmonton Police Service to assist us. One thing I want to highlight is follow-up on any and all tips/rumors. We don't take anything for granted, so even if it's a rumor that somebody is, say, in British Columbia, we follow up. Police dog, again, under certain circumstances to conduct a track. But then, there are many layers of oversight when it comes to these files. So, you have supervisor reviews, then you have manager reviews, and then ultimately, you have what we've referred to as a line officer. So, you have a commissioned officer in charge of the various program lines. They also will conduct reviews to make sure that everything has, all the policies, procedures have been followed. And what's really good about that is you have layers of expertise too, because generally speaking, the more senior you go in the organization, the more experienced members you have. And it helps to have that second look to see if anything might have been overlooked or missed. Considerations for water searches, of course, you have, we have to have some kind of indication that the person went into water. So, but we can initiate water searches. In those cases, we can also contact JRCC through the military, and they can provide assistance where we have limited resources. They have the ability to fill those gaps. But again, JRCC is generally contacted for ocean or large bodies of water, not necessarily over land. For ground searches, we have various considerations we take in place. Again, indication that a person went into a specific area. We need a starting point. We can't just search aimlessly, because we could be looking completely in the wrong direction. We can initiate ground search and rescue. We do not conduct the searches, the RCMP. Our mandate is to oversee. So, we quarterback the search. What we do have are search managers that we train, and those are members that have the specific training to oversee the ground search, the grid searches, and what have you. We also can engage local resources and community-based groups. CASERA is also a great option. We love having the ability for these civilian aviators to help us. It is worth its weight in gold up here, and we've had a lot of success in solving some of our incidents very quickly and in actually saving lives. It should be noted that they have saved lives in my time since I've been here by being able to fly out and go look and locate people that might have otherwise run into a lot of trouble if we had to rely or wait till somebody on the ground could get to them. So, in touching on the missing persons legislation, currently, the RCMP has two mechanisms when it comes to seeking information from organizations or institutions. The first one is humanitarian grounds. So, simply put, that is the free cooperation of these organizations to help us. There's nothing that compels them, other than it's humanitarian. We can't order them to give information, and we have to use that very wisely, because, again, we're dealing with people's privacy, we're dealing with people's personal information, and it needs to be safeguarded. So, under humanitarian grounds, it's usually when there is a reasonable belief that somebody's health or well-being is in imminent danger. And, so, I'll go back to, that includes like the pinging of a cellphone. I can't just say that someone hasn't come home, we need their cellphone pinged. But if we contact a telecommunications company, say, this person is missing, and we have reason to believe that they may be suicidal, they will help us. They'll ping the cellphone, and they'll give us the coordinates, and we can hopefully intercept them. Again, banking activity, social media accounts. Again, this is free cooperation under certain circumstances. And again, there's nothing that compels them or orders them to do it. They do it because it's the right thing to do. The other option that we have are judicial authorizations. So, these come in the forms of either production orders, which are to obtain records, generally speaking, or search warrants to search physical locations. So, if we had reason to suspect someone was in a house, maybe being held, we could find grounds, we would enter into a criminal investigation, get a search warrant. And the reason I mention criminal investigation is because that is where this legislation is going to be very beneficial, because in order for us to get production orders or search warrants, there has to be a crime that we're investigating, not just that somebody is missing. Missing persons aren't a crime, it's a concern. So, I can't go to a judge and say, "I need to search this building because this person hasn't come home." But if we believe this person has been unlawfully confined, or murdered, or what have you, or assaulted, there are crimes, we then can go and get judicial authorizations. However, it is very important to note that these judicial authorizations, it's not like you see on Law &amp; Order where they make a phone call and somebody issues a search warrant for you. We're talking about hours and hours of work to type these up, and oversight and review, and then it has to go before a justice to be reviewed. Sometimes, they get rejected, we go back to the drawing board and start again. So, a basic search warrant or a basic production order can easily take eight hours of work. And that's before it even gets to a justice for review. So, and when you're looking for people that might be in trouble, every second counts. So, what the missing persons legislation can afford, it can serve to expedite the processes that we currently use through the judicial authorization process. But again, can only go through that process if we know that a crime has been committed. It serves to afford also the ability for these organizations and institutions to have coverage for disclosing, because they're actually complying with legislation versus just helping us out. So, if, say, somebody was to complain that they'll released information about their cellphone or whatever to the police, yes, they can say they did it under humanitarian grounds, but there's no legislation to really protect that company versus if there is legislation that they can refer to and say, "Well, listen, we were complying with the Missing Persons Act." That gives them a legal framework. And again, additionally, where it's really important, though, is this gives us another tool for the investigators to utilize outside of the criminal investigation realm. Because, again, a lot of our missing persons investigations don't center around crimes that have been committed. They're just missing. I would be remiss if I didn't highlight the RCMP's concerns with the legislation. And when I say concerns, these are not fatal flaws. Okay, I want that to be known. But we do have concerns from an RCMP standpoint. Clauses 7.4, 8-sub3, and 9-sub4. They do have the potential of being problematic from an investigator's standpoint. These clauses require that consideration be given before granting any of these authorities that the person could be fleeing a domestic situation. And while I understand what the thought process is on that, from an investigative standpoint, that is basically irrelevant. We have the legal obligation to find these people, see them for ourselves, and ascertain their well-being, no matter what the reason is that they've been reported missing or why they've left. Even if they've chosen to leave, we still have to eventually lay eyes on this person and ascertain that they are okay. So, our concerns is that if those clauses, in any way, have the ability to hinder our ability to secure these authorizations, that could be problematic. Especially in a case, again, where if there's no crime that's been committed, we don't have another recourse. We can't then say, "Okay, well, we'll go and just write a warrant or a production order and get that information." Another way, if there's no crime, then we can't do that. So, we're basically at the mercy of this legislation to say, "Either you can get it or you can't." The final point I want to make as well is that we have policies, very strict policies. We have national and divisional policies about the release of information and the safeguarding of information. We have various levels of what we call protection for the information, as well as we, as the RCMP, are bound by the Privacy Act, not only territorially, but the Federal Privacy Act as well. So, what I mean by that is, whether somebody's trying to get away from a domestic situation, once we determine their whereabouts, we don't disclose where they are. All we do is let the complainant know, whoever has made that complaint, that they are alive and well. And if they want to reach out to them, they will themselves. We do not disclose their whereabouts, not even province, like, nothing. It is safeguarded information, and again, there is law and policy that prevents us from doing that already. So, while I understand what these clauses are getting at, it is basically causing a redundancy and a potential for interference in obtaining those authorizations. So, what I'm getting at is you could have a justice that may say, "Well, I believe this person could be fleeing a domestic situation, so I'm not going to issue that authorization." But from a policing standpoint, it's irrelevant, because we need to find that person. We have no other choice, because we're legally bound to do so. I am fully happy to take any questions anyone may have on any of this that I've presented, or anything else.
Thank you for the presentation. I will now ask the member if they have any questions. MLA, just start.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Superintendent. I hope that this is the first of many pieces of legislation that are going to help the RCMP do their jobs, because I think this is a perfect example of where we're behind, what other provinces enjoy, and that this is an issue that needs to be improved upon. I just want to turn back to the stats. 2022, you had the highest number of missing persons reported, 100% solve rate, but they were 100% indigenous and 100% female. Are those statistics at all? Or I see the same in 2021. So, it seems like that's won a lot. 301 is a significant increase, and then it's kind of leveled out last year. And is it normal that you see those kind of ethnic and gender statistics for these kind of cases? Thank you.
Mr. Smith?
Yes. Ethnic, yes. Given where we are, the population size, yeah, it makes sense. The gender disparity does seem off, and I don't have an explanation for it. I don't. We are the collectors of information. We're generally not the creators of it. But yeah, for some reason, those couple of years, we didn't seem to have any male missing persons reports. As for the big jump, just to put it into context for that year, we also saw a big spike in crime for that year. When we look at our crime statistics too, it kind of jumped that year. And we attribute that a lot to just coming out of COVID. We were coming out of COVID, and all of a sudden, it was almost like the floodgates opened. So, we had a lot of movement, people were traveling, whereas before, they hadn't been. So, there was a lot of movement going on, people were coming and going, and we were getting a lot of missing persons complaints, because people weren't returning or not on time. But then it did level off the very next year, so.
You have a follow-up?
Thank you. Yeah, I just note that in some of your other years, you have like the issues related to trail cross, etc. So, I was curious if there was something there, but that's all right. So, the information disclosures around the clauses you've mentioned, or I guess just general investigations. The Act is pretty specific on what information can be disclosed, who it can be disclosed to, and when it can be disclosed. Is everything in the bill, sorry, I should say, the bill, is everything within the bill currently consistent with RCMP standard operating procedure around missing person investigations? Or is some of these requirements new? Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Smith?
No, while they're new to the territorial legislation, of course, but they're basically redundancies to what we already have in place. So, while it's great to reemphasize through the legislation, those safeguards would have already been in place anyway.
Okay, thank you, and then I'll go to Mr. McNeely, MLA McNeely. I think you're muted.
Okay, sorry about that. Yeah, I wanted to thank you there, Superintendent, for making the presentation and sharing the information. In particular, the clauses, the several clauses that you In particular, the, the clauses, the several clauses that you, that you had mentioned to make this piece of legislation more efficient, more stronger, I, I, I look forward to seeing that information once I get back to Yellowknife and, and on with committee. Thank you.
Mr. Smith?
Oh, you're very welcome, and we're very open, and yeah, like I said, the, the legislation is very comprehensive and very thoughtful, it really is. And we only highlight those, those few clauses as just having the potential of causing a, a potentially unnecessary delay, and that's it. Thank you.
Emily McNeely, do you have a follow-up?
Uh, no, Madam Chair, I don't have anything at this point in time, musty.
Thank you. Emily Morgan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So with regard to the, the clauses that you've identified that are problematic, do those kinds of clauses occur in other jurisdictions, or is this an anomaly? Is this something different from what you've seen in, in other jurisdictions?
Mr. Smith?
Uh, it does exist in some, but it doesn't exist in others. Some of our surrounding locations, Alberta, British Columbia, I believe, they, they don't have this. I think Saskatchewan has this now, and again, they don't have those clauses. I can't recall if the Yukon does or doesn't, I didn't believe they did, but I could be incorrect, I, I've reviewed a lot of these. So what I'm, what I'm trying to hope for is also some consistency amongst all the surrounding jurisdictions as well, because we are a policing universe, and if, if they don't have these, these potential pitfalls in other locations, hopefully, we don't either. And then it, it makes it more seamless when we're working together, or working, you know, or, or handing off investigations to other jurisdictions, they're not met with any of these same issues. But again, it, it's, again, to be clear, I, I don't view this as a fatal flaw in the legislation. I just want to flag the potential that there could be an objection to, to us being efficiently able to utilize this legislation.
Mr. Morgan, do you have a follow-up?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Okay, so thanks for explaining that. So I see as one sort of thing that, or protocol that would be related to this issue of, okay, so what if the person doesn't want to be found? That might directly impact how the RCMP is sharing information or updating friends and family that are, you know, that brought this case in the first place, for example. So I've heard mixed statements about what the RCMP's current policy is, and maybe you can clarify. So I've, I've heard on one hand that it's RCMP's practice or protocol to regularly update friends and family on the status of the investigation, how things are going, what's happening. And then I've also heard that, okay, but the privacy of the person is, is paramount, and you would only, you know, update people or let them know if, if you solved the case, but you wouldn't let them know of the location, and, you know, it's up to that person to contact their friends or family directly. So can you explain what is the RCMP's protocol around sharing information with friends and family? Because obviously, it goes both ways, right? There are many people who, and many good reasons why friends and family want all the possible information that's out there the RCMP has about the status of their loved one, and there are other reasons why there might be dangers in that. So can you explain how you navigate that with the RCMP?
Mr. Smith?
Thank you. Great question. So we start out, it'd probably be easier if I start out by, by explaining that we take a lot of investigational care in, in these files. We don't take any of our investigations lightly, including the, the sharing of information. And it's not to be guarded. Like, we try to be as open and transparent as we can, but there are some things we just can't share. One of the biggest cardinal rules for police, for the police world, or the police universe, is being very particularly, very, very careful in guarding information related to open investigations. And why is that? Because any information that gets out regarding an open investigation may impact the end result of that investigation. So part of that safeguarding, though, is, is trying to ascertain certain individuals' rights to know. So what I mean by that is, just because somebody reports a person missing, one of the things we have to look at first is, what relation does this person have to the individual that's missing? Do they have a right to know anything about it? You know, we'll always take the, take the information, and we will investigate, but we may cut that person out of the investigation completely, once that's, once it's determined whether or not this individual has any lawful connection to, to know anything about that individual that's missing. So that's one of the first protections that, that we have. But when we are conducting these investigations, once it's ascertained that this person is, say, a, a valid loved one, or a valid family member or friend that, that is genuinely concerned about somebody, we have to remain guarded about the information we share, even to them. Because we don't know, until an investigation is completed, we don't know where it's going to go. We have had missing persons investigations over the years, not necessarily here, but in, in other places I've worked, where a loved one reports somebody missing, and through the investigation, that loved one actually committed a murder. So we have to be very guarded on the information we share, because you never know at what the outcome of that investigation is. And I'm, I'm referring to a case back in Nova Scotia, where a mother reported her daughter missing, come to find out, she actually murdered her daughter. So we don't fully share all the details, locations, or anything, until we know the outcome of that investigation. So when it comes to, so fast forward to when we do locate somebody and, and ascertain that they are alive and well, and they just don't want to come home or don't want to be found, we don't share that. What we do, and it's part of our, our mandate, how we do these investigations, the only information we relay back to them, or back to the complainant, is that they've been found alive and well. And that's it. Not where they've been found, not a phone number or an email for them to reach out and make contact, it is just the opposite. We'll talk, we'll tell, what we will do, do is request that the missing person reach out to their loved ones and let them know that they're okay, or if they want to, but that's it. And then we conclude our file and we move on. So there are a lot of safeguards in place, and we don't disclose that information. And that's right in our, our policies and procedures, as well as, you know, legally bound under the Privacy Act.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Yakalaya has a, any question? Yeah, Cheryl, you're on mute, yeah.
Hi, okay. Thank you, um, thank you for the presentation. It says in the, I was looking at those clauses, I hadn't read the, I hadn't read the, the Act, and then I was looking at the clauses, so it seems to all say the same thing. The question I had was, because it says there's potential to be problematic in certain circumstances, these clauses require consideration to be given for granting these authorities in circumstances, so the domestic situation, a violent situation, so I guess my question would be, if, if we could do it the way it's not going to be problematic, what does that look like? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Smith?
From my perspective, it would just be the removal of those three clauses. Those three clauses don't, when you read the legislation, they don't lead into other aspects or other techniques utilized, it's just saying that consideration has to be given to that aspect. With or without that, we still have to find these people. So, and again, like, if I go to, sorry, nine, sub four, which is the one that basically says that the police will take that into consideration as well, the police won't take that into consideration as, as a, as a, as a consideration as to whether or not they should proceed. They have to proceed, the police have to proceed. So putting that condition on there, that the police must consider that as to whether or not they're going to make an emergency demand, is irrelevant, because the police won't take that into consideration. That will be taken into consideration as to what we do investigationally, but whether or not we are going to be requesting that information, it, it, it's, it's basically an unrealistic expectation to put on any investigator to say, you must consider this before making that demand. If that demand is, is your only means of obtaining information that could save somebody's life, that's an unrealistic expectation to put on anybody. So, so again, from my perspective, it would just be the simple removal of those three clauses.
Emily Yakalaya, you have a follow-up?
Thank you. I was looking for something like that, so thank you. No, I don't have a follow-up.
Okay, we'll go back to Emily, Tister.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Did Superintendent Smith, did the RCMP raise its concerns with these clauses when it was consulted with the draft legislation in 2022? Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Smith?
Uh, yes, I, I did highlight that in my submission, upon reviewing it. And, and I would like to point out, I had also raised concern from other parts, and, and they were, they were adjusted, so. So it was a lot of back and forth and, and collaborative work, and it was really good.
Follow-up, Mr. Tister?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So the search orders, so clause seven relates to search orders, clause eight relates to, relates to record access orders, and clause nine relates to emergency demands. What part of those, so the, sorry, so if the concern is that a person may not want to be found, and the release of those information can allow presumably their, the person they're con- they don't want to be found by to ascertain their location, what parts of these processes, like in the, the order being granted, are made public, that someone other than the RCMP or other than a court would have access to information that could disclose that person's whereabouts? I'm just wondering what problem we're trying to solve here, if the orders aren't actually issued. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Smith?
Well, from experience, just about anything can be ATIPed. So you can, people can make submissions to whether or not they, they would like to make a, an application to any governing body to obtain copies of information. However, it's not just a free flow of information. When, when, when information is ATIPed, specifically through the, with the RCMP, we don't just sign off and give that information, it goes to Ottawa, they review it, there's a whole department that'll review it and vet specific things. And they will also talk to us about, is there anything problematic in the release of this? In which case, we would flag, yes, their location, where they were found, would be problematic. We, we do this all the time, almost daily. We get ATIP requests, and we vet certain things, and sometimes, the ATIP departments will outright refuse to disclose it because of sensitivities that this information would, would cause. Keep in mind, too, though, that whether the order is granted or it's not granted, it won't stop our investigation from proceeding, it will just delay it. It, it could hinder the investigation. So again, whether or not an order is granted, eventually, our file will come to a conclusion, and that information would be in the file anyway. And again, then we go back to the ATIP and the protection of information and the vetting. So I hope that answers your question.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Okay, I'll ask a question, too, I just have one question. So under the Missing Persons Act, how long would it take to use the court system to, to access the records?
Again, it would, if we had to use the court system, we could only do that if there's a criminal offense. So if, if it's just somebody who is missing, we can't go and ask for, for a production order to get these records, because we don't have a crime that we're labeling, or that we're listing. So that would be the first hurdle. If there was a crime, suspected crime, that we're investigating, again, we would be looking at probably a minimum of eight hours, just to draw up the, the, the information, then it has to go before justice for review. And if everything worked out well, we would get a production order, but these production orders also have stipulations in them that there is a grace period, you have to, you have to give the organization time to put the information together, that can be a week, a month, depending on the complexity of the information or where it's kept, could even be longer. But again, those are in extreme circumstances, you know, and, and quite frankly, if we suspected that there is criminality and we are investigating a crime, we probably won't be going to this legislation to obtain the records. The safer way, the more judicious way to do these sort of practices and, and obtain evidence, because now we're talking about evidence, not just tools, would be to go through the judicial route of obtaining authorizations, securing evidence for the potential of a trial someday.
Thank you, thank you for the information. Mr. Emily McNeely wanted to get back on, to ask a second question. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. My other information, or my other question to the Superintendent is, you're recommending deletion of these three particular clauses. Do you, do you recommend deleting them totally or rewording them? Thank you.
Mr. Smith?
I'm not opposed to either, to be honest with you, just so long as if it is reworded, that it's done in such a way that the potential, it removes the potential of, of roadblocks moving forward. So if it's, if it's reworded or removed, it really, it, it just really has to be done in such a way that if it's reworded, that it still doesn't bode the possibility of somebody saying at, at some point that this person's, I believe this person is just fleeing a domestic situation, so I'm not going to assist by providing that, that, those authorizations.
Thank you. Emily McNeely, do you have a follow-up on this? You're on mute.
Sorry about that, again. I, I, I just bring that out here, so we as a committee could I just bring that out here so we, as a committee, could make note of that and revisit the worded document at a later date here, maybe consider to take, must consider, out of there and make it a little bit stronger so it's more efficient, as the Superintendent had recommended. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Smith. I mean, thank you, Mr. M L A McNeely. Mr. Smith?
No, I certainly would appreciate the review from the standpoint of the police. I think, like I said, either deletion of those clauses or rewording them in such a manner that would eliminate any potential obstacles would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, and then Ms. M L A Morgan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So you mentioned in your last answer a couple of terms, and I don't know if these are legal terms or defined somewhere, but you talked about the police trying to ascertain whether someone is a valid loved one. So the question would be, how do you determine whether someone is a valid loved one? And you talked about that person's right to know. So I wondered if you could explain, is that, what that right entails, or is that just sort of an expression, or is that like a legal term? That would be my first question. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Smith?
Yeah, it's less of a legal term and more of an investigative stance. And what I mean by that is, so a recent example, I received a letter, or the, actually, the commanding officer received a letter asking for a review of a specific file, nothing to do with a missing person, just another investigation. Before we took any actions, we had to basically review who this person is that's sending this letter in. Do they have a valid right to know anything about this investigation? Do they have any standing in the life of the people that were involved with this file? It was actually ascertained that they were a relative, but not a guardian. So then we reach out to the guardian to seek permission as to whether or not they want us to take any action as requested by their family member. Once we got that approval from the actual guardian, then we proceeded with review. So we just don't take what people say to us at face value and say, hey, we'd like you to do this, or we'd like you to do that. We look into it before we start going down certain roads because we don't want to be sent in the wrong direction. And especially when it comes to missing persons. Like I said before, we've had many cases over the years in many jurisdictions where there's an intent to mislead the police when it comes to finding somebody. Best case is that one in Nova Scotia. You know, if we had just turned our attention to a potential runaway youth, then we may not have been looking in the right direction to understand that a murder had taken place and that the complainant was the murderer. So we take great painstaking efforts to make sure that the people that are requesting us to do things are the right people to do so.
M L A Morgan?
Thank you. And one other question. You say that to determine whether the person is alive and safe, you need to see that person in person. Would there be cases where you would get a general sense of where that person is or find a way to contact them, but then get tired of trying to chase them around and find them and be able to somehow legally summon them to come in to see you? Like to, so if that person didn't want to be found, and you know, maybe they're trying to evade police because they don't want anyone to find them, but you're saying, well, we need to be able to see you to close this case, so we need you to come, are there ways that you would try to compel that person to come to you so you could, you know, see that that person's fine and then close the case and move on? Or you would just have to keep pursuing that person, try to find them in person to close the case?
Mr. Smith?
I wish it was that easy. I really do. We do, luckily, it's very few and far between, but we do run into cases at times where, for whatever reason, sometimes it's because they have troubles with the law and they know if they do come forward, they have to face these other issues. But we do have cases where they just don't want to see us face to face. They don't want to tell us exactly where they are so that we can lay eyes on them. They don't want to come to the detachment for whatever reason. In those cases, generally speaking, we have to keep the file running until we can be satisfied that they are safe. Most cases, we eventually do run into them, or somebody will, whether it's, because again, we have that national database. So, for example, if you were missing and you didn't, I was able to find a phone number for you and I called you, but you don't want to come in, you don't want to tell me where you are, you might go through a check stop, though, along some highway, and, or you get stopped for whatever. Somebody runs your name, your name pops up, that police officer, in whatever jurisdiction, will then notify us and say, I saw this person. Because you have a driver's license photo, and they'll tell us that they're fine. And then we can conclude it. But generally speaking, we don't conclude them until we can confirm that they are okay.
Okay. Follow-up from Mr. Tister, and we'll be wrapping up soon.
Yeah, I only have one or two more questions. But I just want to say that like the urgency of solving these investigations or concluding these investigations in a timely fashion seems to be of paramount importance to the public interest and the R C M P's interest as well. So I'm very interested in streamlining this bill to make sure that any potential law doesn't have those kind of roadblocks built in. And it seems in this case, you could have an order not being issued that, as you say, is just going to delay things, not, so it's an impediment to that. But given that you've shared those concerns and they've come back anyway, there must have been a reason. We'll have to ask the minister and the drafters around that. So I just want to make sure we have every, a clear understanding of what your processes are when we have those conversations with the minister. So currently, you mentioned that A T I P kind of, of course, guides everything that happens. Is that the federal act, or is it our act? And are, does A T I P protect the release of information that's under an active investigation? Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Smith?
Yes. So the R C M P, we're bound by the federal A T I P. So we have a unit in Ottawa that will review everything and make an ultimate decision. And that is their sole lot in life, that is what they do every day. They're the specialists in it. Open and active investigations generally don't get disclosed. It's usually when we provide information through an A T I P, it's because of the matter's been concluded, it's already made its way through court, and now somebody wants to conduct some kind of a review or what have you, and they will request that information. Some things that people can A T I P that generally can be released during open investigations are things like statistics or whatever, but that has no impact on the outcome of an investigation. What does our privacy information, as well as techniques and methods that the police employ during investigations and certain information, those would definitely have an impact on an outcome of an investigation, is why it's generally not disclosed.
M L A Tister?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Superintendent Smith. So just for absolute clarity, so the stuff that are in these clauses, those would be protected by A T I P. So like the, okay, sorry. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Smith?
Yes, with or without those clauses, the same rules would apply to all that information.
Okay, thank you. If there's any, no more questions? I just have a question to ask. So that's regarding this bill, so are there any limitations of challenges to implement this bill?
From my, yeah, from my perspective, I don't see any challenges. Like I said, it's a very comprehensive piece of legislation and very thoughtful. I appreciate that there's a, there's conditions within the bill at the end regarding transparency and oversight, which is very commendable. And we welcome it, talking about how many times, you know, reporting on its uses and ensuring that it's not misused. And again, that's why we have a lot of the oversight we have, is to ensure that those things don't get misused or abused. We certainly wouldn't be wanting to take this legislation and use it to find someone who's just wanted. You know, we have other mechanisms in place to track down people who are wanted by the police. We wouldn't be abusing this process and saying, okay, I want you to ping this guy's cellphone because he's wanted or he's missing. He's not missing. He's missing from us, but he's not missing, so.
Thank you for that information. Thank you, because especially that's regarding domestic violence, you know, the impacted family. So that is a really good information to know, because like they're missing from you, you know, because there are still some outstanding case from here that happened like 10 years ago. So I just want to know, so how are you working with the families that are impacted, you know, especially the victim? Because I know the victim, they moved on, but the person's still missing, that this crime against, you know, the individuals, especially against the woman.
So from the onset of missing persons investigations and any serious investigation for that matter, we do is we ensure that there is a liaison from the R C M P that keeps contact. And that could be the lead investigator, or depending on the complexity of the file, it could actually be another member that's not actually integrated into that investigation, is just a family liaison. And that person will keep in contact, see if there's any updates from them, also share certain information with them, not all information again, on the progress. And when I say share information, it could just be as simple as there are no updates, but we're still working on it. It's basically to reassure the families that we're here, we're here to support them, and to give them a status update on what's happening or what's not happening. We do have some cases where the unfortunate reality is the only information we can give to the families is no information. Nothing has changed because no more information is coming in. We've exhausted all our avenues. And it's heartbreaking to have to tell a family that we have no progress for them, but sometimes that's what we have to do. That contact is very frequent right out of the gate. As time goes on, that contact may start to be pulled back somewhat, less frequent. And it's not because we don't want to keep in contact, but it's that if we don't have any progress to report to them, you know, it becomes more of a check-in from time to time, because we also still have to investigate other, all these other files and all these other activities. So we do have to start pulling that back at some point. And that's a decision, that's a case-by-case decision as well. But we ensure that we do keep those contacts going.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you with that in mind. So thank you very much for appearing before committee today, and it is important, it is an important part of our review, and we appreciate you taking the time. Thank you for coming. So, okay, in terms of the next steps, there are three upcoming public meetings taking place regarding Bill Two over the next couple of weeks. On April nine, we will hold a public meeting in the Clavack, in the console chambers at 5:30 PM to hear what the residents of the Clavack have to say about the bill. After that, on April 10, we will hold a public meeting in Anuvik, in the Midnight Sun Complex at 5:30 PM. And finally, on April 17, we will hold a public hearing in Yonlev at 7:00 PM to hear from everyone else who may have feedback on Bill Two. Thank you. And if these tuning, if those tuning in today have any questions, I apologize about that, about this committee's review of Bill Two, or if you want to participate, please contact any of the MLAs on this committee or email committees@ntassembly.ca, and we will be pleased to hear from you. This concludes today's public briefing with the R C M P on Bill Two Missing Persons Act. Thank you.